Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'm in a different room. My computer's in a different position, so I just wanted to make sure.
That room's a lot sunnier.
Yeah, I'm in the basement.
Oh, it's a sunny basement.
You think I have to close my doorbell?
No, I think it's okay. I think it's okay.
It's okay?
Yeah.
Hey Lisa.
Hi Steve.
How are you?
I can hear you.
Oh, good. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Everybody staying healthy and all that?
Yep.
Good deal. Good deal. Looks like we're just waiting on Councilmember Kibble here. Got a two-minute warning here about.
It looks like we're still waiting on Carl as well.
Okay, you know what? I assumed I saw the telephone number that that was him. Okay, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's not the normal number he calls in on, so I don't think it is.
Nope, that's perfectly fine. So, okay, we're waiting on Councilmember Kibble and Councilmember Richards. Give these guys just another minute or two here and we'll just get started without them. At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for June 22nd, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I could just mute myself for a quick minute here, I've got a phone call from Councilmember.
Councilmember Richards has joined us now.
Okay, thank you for everyone's patience on that. It sounds like Councilmember Kibble seems to have figured out what's going on. So, at this point in time, the only individual that is not here is Councilmember Kibble, and it sounds like he will be joining us shortly. At this point, we'll move on to the approval of city council minutes, June 8th, 2020. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Lisa, on page three, the bottom paragraph, we have three instances where the word "gant" is used. That is spelled G-A-N-T-T. It's lower, upper case G, lowercase for the rest, in three locations in that paragraph. Then on page seven, about the middle of that long paragraph, it says, "The city should..." It should read, "Should not accept the streets." It reads, "The city should no accept the streets right now." So, no, should we just change to not? That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda this evening. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and move the agenda.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's consent agenda. Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead. Oh, Councilmember Kurtswell, you're still on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved the consent agenda with two items. Does the mayor want to state what his consent agenda items are?
Yes, thank you for that reminder, Councilmember Kurtswell. Number one, the appointment of dangerous building hearing officer. And number two, easement for DPW Storm Sewer Project.
Thank you. I moved the mayor's consent agenda.
I'll support.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address and that we do have a two-minute time limit for each of our public comments. City Clerk Deaton, do you see anyone joining us by phone that is looking to speak in a public comment this evening?
There's nobody raising their hand.
Okay. Well, at this point, we will close our first public comment and move on to the discussion of the downtown. City Manager Zelnick, do you want to take the lead on that?
Yes, there are a few items to talk about tonight. One, I want to talk about the success of the farmers market. Farmers market's been going very well. We've had a lot of good reviews. People have said a lot of good items at the market, and people are practicing social distancing, and the vendors have been pleased with the amount of people that have been attending the market. Also, the patronicity campaign that we had in conjunction with Oakland County Main Street, we did raise the level of $4,000 to get the $4,000 match from the county. We did raise close to $5,000. The DDA board had appointed a couple committee members, and Carol within our office, as well as the new DDA Economic Development Director, are working on the item that's going to be submitted for individuals who are requesting funds associated with reimbursement due to COVID-19. The next thing I'd like to talk about is I'd like to introduce tonight to council and everybody who's watching our new Economic Development DDA Director, Nate Mack. Nate started today at City Hall. Nate comes with some good experience working as the Executive Director for Jackson Downtown Development Authority. Also was graduate assistant at Central Michigan University, Fire Up Chips.
Fire Up Chips.
Wanted to thank Nate for being able to join us tonight, and looking forward to a lot of good things that Nate's going to be working on, including that patronicity campaign, working on trying to assist businesses within our downtown and throughout the whole community of South Lyon. Nate comes with a lot of good experience. And Nate, if you want to say a couple words tonight, that'd definitely be appropriate.
All right, well, thanks for the introduction, Paul. I'm really excited and honored to join the team in South Lyon and hopefully to continue to move the community forward. Like Paul said, previously, I served as the Jackson DDA Director for almost four years there. So, I feel like a lot of, you know, my experience is directly relatable to the city of South Lyon as far as DDA operations go. But yeah, today was my first day, so it was kind of just starting to, you know, get my feet wet a little bit and going over different policies and things that the city of South Lyon has in place. So, I'm excited to really dig in and keep moving things forward.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. Welcome to the team, Nate. We'll get you up to speed here real quick.
Sounds good.
Does anyone have anything else for Nate or Paul? Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor. Paul, I know we talked about this a little bit, but I just kind of wanted to put it on the record as a concern. With matching funds, I just am a little bit worried about the fact that it's going to be distributed to downtown development businesses, and they're the ones making the decisions on who gets what. And I don't want there to be any people thinking that there's, you know, anything hidden there. So, I just want to make sure we really do a good job of being, you know, transparent about who's getting the money and how the decisions are made.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to partner off that and just ask a question. Are we having people apply for those funds? Or how are they requesting those funds?
Yes, they're going to be applying. They are working on, right now, the application. Nate was getting a chance to review that today. The individuals will be applying. They'll be saying what their needs were based upon the items on the application. They apply, they'll be reviewed by the team. You know, depending upon how many businesses or how many people apply, at that time, then they'll decide on what the distribution of those funds will actually be.
Excellent. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything for City Manager Zelnick or our new DDA Director Nate Mack this evening? All right, thank you guys very much. With that, we will move on to the Fire Chief report with Chief Vogel. How are you tonight, Chief?
Good, Mayor. How are you?
Great.
So, I'm going to try to keep this short. It could be long. A lot of ups and downs in this report. I'm going to start with some downs. I'm going to update on the health of Chief Weir. For those of you who don't know, Chief Weir was injured pretty seriously last week in a house fire in Norfield Township. Mike is home resting. We're still trying to evaluate his injuries. The city has been really good to work with to try to get through workman's comp. He was in the St. Joe system the night of the accident, and now he's in the Sension system. It's gone pretty good. I've been pretty happy with our workman's comp and our insurance. Patricia's been great. On the same note, for those of you, we had a large fire the same day in the morning on Brookfield. It was a duplex. Six people lost their homes. Talking to the sheriff investigators, they have been unable to determine the cause. We're still waiting for the third-party private investigator to give his thoughts hired by the insurance company. I was a little... It was kind of a downer to find out that the homeowner probably will not rebuild. She wants to tear it down and just sell the vacant lot. I was kind of hoping that since we saved half that building that we could be repaired, but it doesn't seem to be in her plans. We also had a fire on West Hills in... Small fire at a house over Saturday night. Luckily, we were able to get that one contained pretty quickly. We also had a gas leak today at the DPW lot that was quickly handled. I think Paul might discuss that one. Now, some good news. We had a new hire. Her name is Brooke. She's a vet. And we were able to get her in the Howell Fire Academy in September. They do plan on having school for high schoolers at the Fire Academy in Howell, so that was positive. With the help of our city attorney, we were able to get some money back from C-E Solutions, which was exciting. And then, since we've become... The city's opened. We're feeling a little overwhelmed with the amount of calls and business we've been doing with the construction in that city. The city has just boomed with demands, I feel like, on SafeBilt and the fire department. I've been working with Tara from SafeBilt and Al, our inspector, to try to figure out a way to deal with these phone calls. The amount of requests that we're getting for inspections, dealing with the fire suppression systems and like Dixboro and Ten Mile, the RCA building, we're just really busy, and the demand on our time is really... Since Al's part-time, we're kind of struggling, but I think we're working through it. And we talked to Tara today, and I think we got a work plan. And then finally, we got some great news today. We got a grant from the state of Michigan for $5,000 to buy two shipping containers. We will be building our own burn building, which has been high priority for this department. We will, hopefully, I'll have an agenda ready for you all to approve in two weeks. And we're pretty excited about that, so. A little long tonight, I apologize.
All very important, Chief Vogel. Does anyone have anything for Chief tonight? Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Before we move over to the Police Chief report with Chief Sobek, I made a mistake earlier in... Mama, maybe help us fix this this evening before we get too much further along. I was supposed to entertain a motion to add something to new business this evening in regards to Oakland County helping us with absentee ballots. Go ahead, City Attorney.
I think you can still add it and amend the agenda. I don't think it's a problem.
All right. Well, if Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Make a motion that we amend the agenda to account for the voting machine or absentee ballot assistance from Oakland County.
I support.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble and Councilmember Walton. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you for all of your help on that. With that, we'll head over to Chief Sobek in the Police Chief report.
Okay, tomorrow morning, excuse me, tomorrow morning on North Wells Street, it's going to be closed approximately eight o'clock, probably most of the day. They're bringing in some more heavy machinery to remove the roof on the old RCA building, so that construction is going to continue. That's exciting to see. The bike path repairs will begin on early Wednesday morning on the 24th and probably continue throughout the day on Thursday evening. This information is all going to be posted on our Facebook page, but the portion of the bike path is going to be just south of Eleven Mile, quite a bit ways down to get some of those repairs done. So, that's going to be taking place on a Wednesday morning. I have submitted documentation to receive our reimbursement for the two grants that we will receive regarding the data storage and the in-car cameras for the watch guard from MMRMA. So, I don't think they're going to be processed until one of the individuals gets back from vacation until July. I will officially present them at a later meeting. I'll be discussing the Motor Fest possibilities and the details of that with Deb Cook. I'm not sure if she's going to bring something to me regarding cancellation or just look at the feasibility of the event that's supposed to occur sometime in July, but we will discuss that tomorrow. Work on from there. And Officer Jacobs was given the department the certificate of merit today for his outstanding work on catching the larceny from auto suspects, the foot chase, the resisting arrest, obtaining confessions, and the well-written report. About 40 larceny from autos that occurred, not only within the city but outside of the jurisdictions like Green Oak Township and Lyon Township. So, we officially gave him an award today. So, we're going to continue updating our use-of-force policy to include some type of language for the duty to intervene. Basically, if an officer sees somebody, the potential of using excessive force, then we're going to update that language. And I will be talking with Lisa in the near future here to get that squared away. But other than that, that's all that I have right now.
Thanks, Chief Sobek. Does anyone have anything for Chief this evening? Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate you. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate you taking the initiative to, um, update the wording on the, on the duty to intervene. I think that's a, a really good thing for us to do to show, you know, our, to show that we're taking the initiative to do that. So thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Chief Sowick. With that, we'll move on and introduce Oakland County Treasurer Andy Meisner in his presentation. If it's okay with everyone, uh, just for efficiency sake, um, if we could just save our questions and comments for the end, if that's all right. Great.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. And, uh, my thanks to the mayor and, uh, council uh, and to the distinguished municipal staff, uh, for the opportunity to be with you briefly. I know you have a full agenda, so I'll try to be quick. Uh, wanted to just share a couple of thoughts, uh, briefly. Uh, the first is that I want to wish uh, everyone in South Lyon well. Um, as the mayor talked about, we have gone through a pretty serious crisis and I think that, uh, the community has shown, uh, great resilience uh, in coming together, uh, and following some difficult guidance, but doing so in good faith. And, uh, and thankfully getting some great, uh, return, uh, in terms of good health and, and flattening the curve. But I, I'm aware that the crisis has created, uh, a very difficult economic situation for a lot of people. And so the first thing that I wanted to share was a resource that's available through my office, uh, the County Treasurer's Office. For anybody who's out there, uh, as an individual, uh, who has been put in a tough money spot because of the COVID situation, uh, you might be somebody out there wrestling with the unemployment insurance system. Uh, you might be trying to pay the bills, uh, battling with your mortgage company, uh, or mortgage lender, or maybe with the, uh, credit, uh, agencies, uh, and, uh, who are digging your, your credit score. Uh, we have something through my office called the Financial Empowerment Center. And I have a phone number that I'm going to share right now for our lead counselor. And, uh, her name is Rita. It's R-E-D-A. And her phone number, uh, is 248-807-5287. And again, that's 248-807-5287. And if you're an individual or a family and you're falling on hard times and you need a place to turn, uh, give us a call. Uh, Rita's real friendly and, uh, can help you work through, uh, budget uh, and tackling some of these challenges that people are facing. Now, the second function of our Financial Empowerment Center is to help small businesses. And South Lyon has got some fantastic, uh, small businesses that we want to make sure make it through this crisis. Uh, our services are also available to help small businesses apply for some of the grant and loan programs that are available. Uh, you know, the county did a grant program. Uh, the federal Small Business Administration or SBA, uh, has also done a number of programs, uh, that are available. And, uh, sometimes they're a little tricky to apply for. Uh, it's sometimes helpful to have somebody to kind of walk you through the process. Uh, and our team is available to help those folks as well, uh, because I know that South Lyon uh, is big on small business and, uh, small business is not only what drives our economy locally, uh, but countywide as well. The last thing that I wanted to mention is just that, uh, our office has enjoyed a great partnership, uh, with the city of South Lyon, uh, over many years. And, uh, one of the elements of that partnership, uh, is that, uh, we partner on collection of taxes. And, uh, if folks fall behind, uh, and have trouble paying their taxes, uh, they can't, and they, they're not able to pay them locally, they get turned over to our office at the County Treasurer's Shop. And one bit that I wanted to share is that right when the COVID crisis hit, I suspended tax foreclosure for the entire year. Uh, so if you're out there and you had delinquent taxes, uh, I want you to worry about your health first, uh, and then, uh, be in touch. We're, we're reaching out to taxpayers right now. Uh, if you were on a payment plan and you're able to continue, I encourage you to do that. Uh, but, uh, you know, if you've been hit and you have to miss a payment, uh, or get in touch with us to rework the arrangement, uh, we're happy to show you that flexibility. The third and final thing that I wanted to share, uh, relates to, uh, an opportunity for partnership between our office, uh, that is strictly optional. But before I ever became treasurer, uh, the Treasurer's Office started something called a local government investment pool. And as municipal entities like South Lyon, uh, or like Oakland County, uh, we're governed by a state law called Public Act 20. And basically it says, safety first, and you know, this is not stocks and bonds. This is principal preservation. We have about 47 communities across Oakland County that place funds with our local government investment pool. Uh, we manage that pool, uh, with the most conservative investment principles that are embodied in the Oakland County Investment Policy, um, as well as the state law that governs our, uh, our, our public investment of those funds. Now, we, um, uh, have not, I think, had, uh, South Lyon thus far participate. Uh, it's just another tool in the tool belt. Uh, it may be that the city, uh, you know, is, is, doesn't have a lot of surplus cash. But the idea is, is that if it's resources that you don't need immediately, uh, that are 60, 60-day, uh, or further out on the horizon, uh, this is an option that's available. And, um, I, I need to confess that as the rate, the interest rate environment, uh, is going down, uh, so too is the return of the local government investment pool. Uh, but right now, uh, the effective rate of return, uh, on this is 1.41%. Uh, and fiscal year-to-date, it's 1.91%. And it's not that we're any better at investing. Uh, quite simply, uh, we just do it in bigger chunks. Uh, and so we're able to negotiate for better rates, uh, that we then share with some of the 47 communities that, that park money with us. If, uh, you know, upon conversation, uh, you decide that you want to explore it further, uh, Natalie Neff is my investment administrator. Uh, she served in that role for my predecessor and was doing a great job. So we, we kept her right there. Uh, but her name is Natalie Neff and, uh, she is, uh, available to, uh, chat. I'm available right now to answer any questions either about the LGIP uh, or about some of the important services, uh, that we offer, uh, to families and businesses uh, in South Lyon and across, uh, the entire county, uh, which you can also learn more about, uh, at our website. And if I may share the, the web address, it's www.oakgov.com/treasure. So www.oakgov.com/treasure. Uh, and then the last number I'll leave you with is my cell phone number, um, which I carry with me. Uh, and I think that being accessible, uh, as a public servant is really important. Um, so you could call me on this or text at 248-421-ANDY. That's, uh, 248-421-2639. And with that, I'll just tell you, I, I love South Lyon. I, I think it's a beautiful community. Um, I've really enjoyed the time that I've had spending there over the last, uh, 10 or, uh, 11 years, actually come July 1st. And, uh, I appreciate each of your, uh, steady hand, uh, during a, a time of, of crisis and appreciate the chance to spend a few moments with you this evening.
Thank you, County Treasurer Meisner. I really appreciate you taking the time out to, uh, spend some time with us this evening and speak about those important programs. At this point, do we have any council members or anyone that would have any questions for Mr. Meisner?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Richards, I'm going to come to you first and then Councilmember Kurtzwell will come to you next. Go ahead, Councilmember Richards.
Uh, Mr. Meisner, uh, was your predecessor, um, might not be an immediate, but, uh, Mr. C. Hugh Dehaney? We used to call him Uncle Hugh, uh, at the Treasurer's Office.
He was not my immediate predecessor. Um, my immediate predecessor, uh, was C. Hugh Dehaney's son. Um, a, a lovely gentleman by the name of Pat Dehaney. Um, but I, I certainly, uh, am aware of, uh, the senior Mr. Dehaney's contribution to Oakland County. Uh, as I understand it, he was a real trail, trailblazer, uh, in helping the county to develop and I think helped us originally get on, on computers, uh, which was a, a, a pretty big deal. But, uh, thank you for the question.
Just one more, uh, the structure. My on?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Richards. I didn't realize you had a follow-up.
Yeah, the structure of your office and your function in the, in the, your office is at 1200 North Telegraph. Is it, uh, much larger than it was under Hugh or Patrick Dehaney's?
Uh, no, sir, it's not. Uh, and, and I should have mentioned that right when I came in, I named the conference room, the Dehaney Conference Room after both Hugh and Pat. Uh, but actually our staff is smaller. Uh, I, I came in during the Great Recession and housing crisis. And it was a time of budget cuts. Uh, and so, uh, we were forced to, uh, reduce, uh, our staffing, uh, to be able to balance the budget. Uh, and so we did that, uh, and we have maintained that staffing level, uh, throughout. Uh, you know, I think government should be lean and efficient, uh, and that's, uh, that's been our approach.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much. First of all, um, uh, Mr. Meisner, it's an absolute pleasure to have you here. I know you're extremely busy. You're extremely knowledgeable and I think we're very fortunate to have you here tonight. Uh, so thank you for making the time for South Lyon. Um, I had a, a couple of questions. Uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, this particular investment explain a little bit in terms of, uh, the, the investment term. So this is not to be used as a money market where we, a, a bank, what you're looking for is long-term investment, uh, uh, longer than, you know, 30 days. I mean, what is the average term that your municipalities are investing in this pool?
Thank you. That's a wonderful question. Um, you know, it's, it's relatively short-term. Uh, we just ask that people focus on keeping the money there longer than 30 or 60 days. Um, I think the average, uh, I would, um, I, I'll get the specific number, but I feel like the average is somewhere in the area of, uh, of several months. Um, and so it's not anything that has to be tied up for any long period of time. And if a, uh, cash management, uh, uh, occurrence should happen, uh, you know, you can certainly just, uh, give us a, a holler um, and let Natalie know that you need the money and, and we'll return it. Um, but the idea is, is that we just want it to be long enough, uh, that essentially locals aren't just kind of gaming, uh, the system. The idea is, is that, you know, if you need overnight money, uh, just like you said, I would recommend, uh, one of the overnight money market accounts from one of our credit unions perhaps, or one of our community banks, um, or some of the other funds that are out there like, uh, class. And if you have longer-term money, uh, you know, you might think about, uh, you know, a certificate of deposit, uh, and, you know, tying that up for a certain period of time. Ours is kind of in the middle. Uh, and so not like for an immediate need, um, but something where you could park it, uh, earn a bit more return than you might, uh, if it was, uh, just held locally. Um, and, you know, we have had people that have left money in there. Uh, we have locals that have left balances in there over many years. Um, and then they just have drawn on it, uh, as the need, uh, comes up. But I'm going to get the specific to-the-day average, um, and, and with the council's permission, uh, I will, uh, forward that maybe to the city manager to share, uh, because I want to be able to give you a precise answer on that question.
The rate of return that you provided, the 1.41% or the 1.9%, uh, roughly what is a return when there's inflation? Um, the, the, we're in non-inflationary times, so I assume that that rate would increase as the rate of inflation increases, or are you investing in extremely conservative securities that, that the rate of inflation tempers at rate of return?
Yeah, so our investments are really, really safe by definition. So let me go through what the permissible investment vehicles are.
Perfect.
One of them, we already talked about, um, which is a certificate of deposit. Uh, you know, not unlike what you get, um, at, uh, you know, a, a local bank. And right now, our, um, portfolio is ma, is 47% certificate of deposits. Then we also have, um, some negotiable CDs. Uh, then, uh, a third type of investment is what we call commercial paper. Uh, it's corporate issued debt, but it's 270 days in duration or less. The other, the other area where we've gotten some good return is there are federal agencies, uh, like Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, uh, that issue, uh, three-year bonds, uh, that are backed with the full faith and credit of the federal government. Uh, and so, uh, those, uh, are an area, uh, where we have been able to invest and get some return. So, um, and, and then also the, you know, again, the, the money market accounts. Um, right now, we're about 47% CD. Uh, we are about, uh, 9% negotiable CD. We're only 2% commercial paper, about 20% of these, uh, federal agency bonds. Uh, and then, uh, just a, a, a small amount that we hold in our, uh, in our, our passbook or our, our checkbook. Um, and so, uh, those are the, some of the, uh, deposits are the, uh, current portfolio that we've got. Um, and so, uh, none of these vehicles are really sophisticated enough to be able to like hedge, to have a hedge against inflation, uh, built in. Uh, they're just straightforward, kind of vanilla, uh, investment, uh, uh, vehicles. Now, the contrast would be with our pension system. You know, so I sit on the board of the Oakland County Pension. The law that governs pensions allows for a lot greater variety, uh, in what you can invest in. So like, the pension system is going to have stocks or bonds, mutual funds, real estate, um, uh, international holdings, uh, and those sorts of things. And that law, PA 314, allows you to be riskier to get a higher return. Uh, but our policy says first and foremost, safety and principal preservation, then liquidity considerations to make sure you can pay your bills. And then only then, after those two questions have been answered, uh, can we even look at yields. And that's largely going to be just dictated on the, the, the national, uh, rate environment. Um, and with the Fed rate being where it's at, um, you know, interest rates have just really been going, uh, way down. Um, such that I think, uh, you know, I think some of these overnight funds right now are maybe paying, you know, 15 or 25 basis points, uh, at the most.
And, um, I have two more questions. Uh, what is your procedures for, uh, protecting fraud in withdrawals? I mean, what kind of security systems do you have in place to check and make sure money is not improperly withdrawn?
Yeah, well, that's a, that's a great question and that's a particularly timely question. Um, as these days, uh, every one of us is under, uh, constant attack, uh, from cyber criminals and people trying to perpetrate fraud. Our banking services, uh, that we use at the county include a number of fraud prevention, uh, mechanisms. Um, but we also have got, uh, some redundancies built into our procedures. Um, and so, uh, if somebody were to And so if somebody were to request funds, there would be two separate levels of verification that happens. And so, you know, we're not going to just send money based on an email. We are going to be opening up lines of communication and then wiring only after we have absolute confidence that it's the entity that we're trying to deal with. And we have been fortunate in that we have not had this happen. But it's something that you have to be vigilant about and that we constantly monitor for new technology to assist with fraud programs that can use algorithms to look at trends in expenditures and cash flow. So that if like a request was very different than the other transactions that had happened, that would be one of several red flags that would come up. But I'll be very honest in telling you that it's a constant process to stay two steps ahead of the criminals who are working globally and, and seem to really be very persistent. But we, we haven't lost a penny yet, and we will not, on my watch.
One more question, please?
Please.
This deals with, not with the, this procedure, it deals with the foreclosure on property taxes?
Yes.
So you have, you're not going to foreclose on, you, the county is not going to foreclose on delinquent property taxes, but still, if the city turns over to you five or six properties that have delinquent taxes, you're still going to reimburse the cities?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that doesn't stop? Okay.
No, 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 it does not. And we use something called a delinquent tax revolving fund that we administer through our office. And when, when February rolls around and you are reporting to our office about, like you said, maybe there's five tax, you know, five properties that haven't paid, or how many ever it is, then we use that delinquent revolving tax fund to basically buy those collectibles. And so we front you the money so that you could manage your cash flow. And then we undertake the process of collecting those dollars. And that is not affected in any way by this policy. We will continue to do that. We did, we call it settlement and distribution. The process of settling with you to understand how many delinquencies you've got, how it affects the DDA and the different tax increment financing authorities that exist. And then distribution, which is where we write you the check to cover that. That happened this year, as it happens every year, and that happened without any interruption. It won't be affected. The only thing that the policy does is it simply gives people a little bit more breathing room if they are having difficulty with the understanding that if they're able to pay, we want them to do it because the, the, the property taxes are not going away and the interest is continuing to grow. But between having time and, and not, we want to do that. And one of the reasons, by the way, why I think that's so important is, you know, I was treasurer back in 2009 when I came in during the foreclosure crisis. And there was an, there was a huge wave of mortgage and tax foreclosures. I don't know that South Lion had a ton of tax foreclosures, but I can tell you that your neighbor, the township, had quite a few, including huge developments that had only been partially built. Those foreclosures caused a major drop in property values that affected our taxable values in such a severe way that we're still coming back from it 10 years later. And so my thought was that by short-circuiting the tax foreclosures for the year, we could prevent the long-term loss of taxable value and property values and help people get through so that by next year, you know, hopefully things are a little bit closer back to normal. Is that clear?
Very much. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for the thoughtful questions and, you know, my number's 421 Andy. I'm going to get you that average maturity as one of my to-do lists or one of my homework items. But I really appreciate the thoughtful questions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, yes, go ahead.
Mr. Meisner, I was wondering, do you have a sense of what the percentage of CVTs in Oakland County that are participants in the investment pool?
Yeah, it's about 75%.
Okay.
Yeah, about three-quarters. Yeah.
Well, then, I mean, they wouldn't be involved if they didn't think that it was valuable to them. So that's, that's pretty telling.
Yeah, you know, and it's, I think the biggest thing is that it's optional. And it's strictly a question of if it works with your cash flow. You know, we're blessed at the county that we have, we have full-time staff that their only job is investment and tracking interest rates and in examining different banks, looking at like stress-testing banks and credit unions. And so, you know, that team is doing that full-time. And at the local level, a lot of times, you know, the treasurer, the finance officer has to wear a lot of different hats. And so I think at most, it's just an opportunity to leverage that full-time work that we have going into those and getting the benefit of some higher rates. But, but I want to be clear, we're in a dropping rate environment. So my pitch here is not to promise big rates. The, the promise is really about principal preservation and just adding another tool in your tool belt for the mayor and council and the municipal staff who handles the, the cash management.
That same lost in the private sector, though. I mean, they're, they're not making any more money either. So it seems like that big vehicle that you have is proving itself to be valuable to those communities.
Yeah, you know, for some of the communities, you know, that have gotten in, you know, the, the interest that they've earned has, has been able to free up some dollars, you know, to pay for a public safety officer here or there to, to help fill a little hole in the budget. And so, you know, it's not going to be a dramatic change to the financial situation. But it might just allow you to earn a little bit more interest than you would otherwise. And with what I'm hearing from Lansing, cuts in revenue sharing, some of the constraints associated with Proposal A and the Headley Amendment, you know, the, the places for local governments to turn are getting kind of fewer and fewer. And so if that's a tool that can, you know, provide any benefit, we want to make it available. And by the way, I'm also happy to come back with Natalie Neff, my investment administrator. And I'm going to forward some documents. You know, if you decided to do it, there's a resolution that you would just pass as a body. And it's pretty straightforward. And then, you know, the way it works is just, you know, you decide what you want to place. And then when you want to pull those funds to, you know, cover a payroll or whatever sort of cash flow event that happens, then, you know, you, you contact our team and then, you know, we, we execute it usually the next day.
I think all of us are looking for vehicles to stretch our dollars as far as we can. So if that would help, that would be helpful for us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
I have another question.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead, since it doesn't look like anyone else does.
Okay, Mr. Meisner, in light of the fact that the size of any community, any community or government of our size, it comes to bear quite heavily, I would think. Okay, say our community wanted to, had an eye on funding a project with putting away some money for a project, oh, five, six years down the road, and we know it's going to cost millions, okay? And we're looking for matching funds from Oakland County, okay, on the matter. Say, Drain Commission or Road Commission or Park Commission, okay, something of that nature. Would you recommend a community of our size look at this program quite a bit?
Yeah, although unfortunately, the local government investment pool does not offer matching funds. But this would be a way, if you had some money that you wanted to sock away for five years, you know, you could leave it with, with the local government investment pool. You could earn the five years of interest that would help you, you know, cover the costs of, of a given program. But, you know, you would want to really look at what sort of interest that we would pay you over that period of time. You would want to measure that against like what a five-year certificate of deposit would get you. And then, you know, what other, whatever other kind of investment vehicle. But unfortunately, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not authorized to do any matching funds. It's more about trying to put just a little bit more interest in your pocket to get your funds working a little bit harder for you to be able to cover the sort of project that you talked about, whether that be a road project or a sewer or drain or whatnot.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Councilman Richards, and thank you, Oakland County Treasurer Andy Meisner. City Manager Zelnick, did you have anything?
Well, I just wanted to bring up tonight for council, you know, appreciating Oakland County and Andy providing this information to us. In order for us to partake in this investment vehicle, we would have to make changes to our City of South Lion investment policy to include something like this. Tonight's agenda also, we have something regarding the OPEB Trust. And I've included for all of you a copy of agreements through Oakland County to, in fact, participate in this. We're not necessarily asking your approval to do that tonight. But what we'd like to do is based upon the presentation and based upon the reception that in fact we do have right now, is that we'll can, we'll move forward, working with staff and our city attorney on a new investment policy to include this option of this pool through Oakland County as well as the discussion regarding the OPEB Trust. Our, our investment policy has not been updated in close to 20 years. So we want to make sure that we include all these particular vehicles and address items that the council feel is important, and we'll be bringing that before you at a later date.
Okay, great. Well, I want to thank County Treasurer Andy Meisner for his time and for the nice tips and information that we can share with our residents and small businesses this evening. And I'm sure we'll be in touch down the road.
Can I, forgive me. I had texted my, my investment administrator to get an answer to that question. And the average days to maturity for the portfolio is 351 days. To that, to that earlier question, the average is 351 days. So I'm going to cross that off my to-do list and we'll be happy to not have you have to wait for that information. But I do appreciate your partnership and appreciate South Lion being just such a special place. Wish you all continued good safety and health, and if I can be of service, then please be in touch. 421 Andy.
All right, thank you very much.
Great friends. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will look to move on to old business number one, Tax Abatement Agreement, 135 East Lake Street.
City Council recently adopted the tax abatement policy for the community and in March established a commercial rehabilitation district for the property formerly known as RCA Building. The property owner filed an application for commercial rehabilitation certificate and council voted to approve the resolution for the commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for 1855 LLC at 135 East Lake Street. As part of this process, the city prepared a tax abatement agreement which outlines certain terms and conditions for the certificate the city attorney and clerk and I have been working on over the last couple of weeks. And tonight, we've attached that tax abatement agreement for your to review and the possible course of actions to approve or not approve the tax abatement agreement for commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for 1855 Holdings LLC at 135 East Lake Street. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
So I had Councilmember Kennedy just a nose ahead of you there, Councilmember Kibble, so we'll go to Councilmember.
Yeah, I know, it looks like it covers everything that we've talked about previously. So I'd like to go ahead and make the, the motion to approve the tax abatement agreement for commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for 1855 Holdings LLC at 135 East Lake Street.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion this evening? Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Kibble to approve tax abatement agreement for commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for 1855 Holdings LLC at 135 East Lake Street. City Clerk Deaton, would you lead us in a roll call vote this evening? Thank you.
Dylan?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kurt Swell? Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Elta?
Yes. Thank you, City Clerk Deaton. Motion passes. With that, we will move on to old business number two this evening and the Fieldstone Development.
The Fieldstone Plan Development rezoning preliminary PD site plan approval was tabled at our last city council meeting on June 8th. This was following the applicant's presentation and council discussion and requested for additional information, including lot coverage information, site geological soil survey. It was all submitted to council over a week ago. And we had submitted information and we're prepared for council, any other questions that you may have tonight. I believe the applicant is also here on the call as well. And I'll turn it over to Kelly, our planner from CIB Planning, to go over any other additional information.
Thank you, City Manager. In addition to what Mr. Zelnick has told you, I just wanted to bring your attention to a couple of things that I added into the agenda note. I provided some additional information on land developments, what their intent is, and the planning commission's findings of those intent, of those intents. And then additionally, I included a table that shows the requirements for the R3 district and then what the applicant is proposing and the waivers that they are requesting. I think at the last meeting, it was asked for that to be a little more clearly stated. And I wanted to make sure that that was easier to read. I'm happy to answer any questions, specific questions, but at this time, if the applicant has something else they want to add, or we can start discussing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Mike Knowles. I'm with the Amalor Group, 49287 West Road, Wixom, representing Polty Homes. Joe Score with Polty Homes is also on the call tonight. I would like to share my screen, and I have just a very quick recap presentation for you. Okay, is everybody seeing that? Thank you. Polty Homes substantial investment in the Fieldstone PD would provide attractive housing opportunities for both empty nesters and first-time buyers. The Fieldstone Plan Development is a unique opportunity to develop a tough site in a beneficial way. The small triangular site is challenging because it butts an active railroad track and most of the road frontage is unpaved. The by right zoning, which you can see in the upper-left corner for the subject property, is RM1 multifamily, which permits 154. for the subject property is RM1 multifamily, which permits 154 units to be built on the site. Fieldstone, which you see down below, proposes 50 single-family homes, meeting the qualifying conditions for the planned development. The reduction by 104 units has a beneficial effect on the surrounding properties. Fewer public services are required and less traffic congestion is expected. The site serves as a nice transition between the high-density use to the south and to the east, and the large lots to the north. This benefits, the benefits that this plan offers would not be achieved under the existing zoning. The plan was recommended for approval by South Lion Planning Commission after scrutiny and revisions incorporating the planning commission's suggestions. The plan was also endorsed at the public hearing by neighbors of adjacent Colonial Acres. We are extremely grateful for the community's support for the many positive aspects of our plan. The positive aspects that make this plan work include the open space, the buffers, the pedestrian nature trail, the park benches, the preserved trees, the upsized landscaping, the privacy fence, the added sidewalks, the improved architecture, and again, the significant reduction in density. At your, at your last meeting, the plan was tabled to provide city council supporting calculations with respect to the coverage ratios. The PD waivers were requested so that we could allow options and a variety in the architecture. To be clear, the maximum impervious lot coverage remains 35% maximum. This is in accordance with the City of South Lion standards and all other developments in the city. The total lot area covered by all buildings for this proposal is still 30%, and the maximum lot area covered by any individual lot is proposed as 33%. We provided detailed spreadsheets to comply with the city council requests to review the underlying math presented in the Lot Matrix, which considers approximately 17,000 possible buyer combinations for the site. We provided a detailed matrix with coverage analysis that included the largest possible house lot fit calculations. We also provided a summary spreadsheet indicating the ranges, the maximums, and the minimums. We hope those spreadsheets were more informative than overwhelming. It's a lot of information and it can be exhausting. The conclusion is that there is 291,000 square feet of lot area that could have a maximum of 86,000 square feet of house. This unlikely scenario requires every single buyer to pick the largest house that fits on the lot, including every single available option. That scenario works out to 30% overall coverage, with the individual lots maxing out at 33% building coverage. We thank you for your continued consideration and your continued support, and we're available to discuss this further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knowles, for that. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd like to thank Mr. Knowles for providing the, the spreadsheets that were requested at the last meeting. And I also want to thank Ms. McIntyre for providing the information that would not contain on the spreadsheets where she put in the information for the, the deck size in order to verify the calculation. So I went through each of the spreadsheets, all 50 lots. They're all color-coded to show which combinations would be permissible and which would not, which would fill up to 33% lot coverage. And when it was 33.1, it was color-coded as a red combination, not permitted. And then verified that each of the, the impervious surface coverage also was at 35% or less. And the spreadsheets clearly show and match those requirements. So I certainly appreciate both of your efforts in providing the information and in going through and color-coding those so that we are very comfortable with the fact that anything that gets built there according to the spreadsheet as it's currently color-coded will meet the criteria that the planning commission has established. So I certainly appreciate, appreciate you passing that information along for that purpose. The, the only other thing I, I guess I'd like to, to see, we talked about this a little bit at the, the last session, and maybe it's somewhere, and I didn't see it, is somewhere in the documentation the fact that, I think Mr. Knowles mentioned that the homeowners association was going to retain responsibility for snow removal and street maintenance on this development, that they weren't going to be dedicated, the streets weren't going to be dedicated to the city. I just want to make sure that's, that's clearly noted so that as the, as the development approaches its maturity and completion, and we have a completely new group of people on council that doesn't get, get lost somewhere. But other than that, I really appreciate everybody's help in providing the requested information, it was most helpful.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Mayor, um, Kelly, I wanted to just chat with you for a second. On the revised letter dated June 17th, that's included in the packet, and it does say in there on page seven, emergency access, the police and fire departments requested the installation of a paved graded emergency access drive to 11 Mile. This has been provided and details for construction maintenance will have to be provided at the time of the final PD plan. I thought at the last meeting you said that the planning commission did not make the emergency access part of the approval. What's the step? Why is this now back in your letter?
I'm sorry, so on page seven, which number are you referring to?
Number six, please.
Okay. Emergency access drive to 11 Mile, that's not the Colonial Acres.
Sorry?
That's not to Colonial Acres. There's an access drive on 11 Mile. So there's a major, there's a main entrance, boulevard entrance to the development, and then there is a emergency access off of 11 Mile. You have, we, fire requires at least two points of access to the property. That one on 11 Mile will be gated, and in the event that an emergency happens, I believe that they can either cut it, or there's, it's key, or I'm not sure how it works exactly, but. So that, that emergency access does not refer to Colonial Acres at all.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand this then. There are two, the main entrance into the development is off of 11 Mile on to Lexington. And then, and then the other gated, that's going to be the main drive. And then the access that we're talking about in paragraph six is, there it is, the emergency access drive is just further down. So it, I just really want to make sure that it does not connect to Lexington into Colonial Acres.
It does not.
It's off of 11 Mile. Okay, thank you very, very much, Kelly, you did a nice job.
Sure, you're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I just wanted to, to point out, I've, I've looked at Fieldstone from a myriad of views to determine my position. I understand the project wasn't a good candidate for our three development, but I find the proposed project had taken the PD flexibility to an extreme that exceeds my comfort. I applaud planning and the developers for finding a way to provide sidewalks throughout the development where no one would have to walk into the street to make a full circuit through their neighborhood. I also gave consideration of the fact that this alter, this altered dense and close-style lat layouts is much more pervasive with new developments to minimize costs associated with expensive infrastructure, and it can be found among all of our neighboring communities. That's not to say I like it, but I do recognize the homes are sold and lived in, so the market clearly supports this. I know Polty's reputation and their extensive organizational and funding resources, and I'm confident if approved, this project will support a lot of good neighbors for our community. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kittle. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Mike, does this development have a ranch?
Yes, ma'am. It does, it does have a ranch. The York is a ranch. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what's your price point, your overall, your price point on these homes?
They'll, they'll start in the low threes and probably get up to mid to upper threes.
Really?
Yes.
Thank you for bringing a very, very nice product to South Lion. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and make the, the motion. Is the motion going to be the one to approve the first reading of the ordinance?
City Attorney Hamamay, do you want to give some feedback on that?
Yeah, it, it really, that's fine. If you're going to go with the ordinance though, I do have to make some changes to it. The version that was included in your packet for tonight's meeting was the incorrect version.
Okay.
The version that was in your packet from June 8th was the correct version.
I have that available.
I'm happy to point out for the benefit of council and the public just what the changes are from what's presented in your packet today versus what should have been in your packet today. And then you can approve the motion as amended if you're comfortable with that.
Well, I mean, if you want to point out what the changes are, I have the packet from the last meeting. I can read it verbatim from that packet if you want. You want me to go ahead and just read that one from the last meeting?
Whatever you're more comfortable with.
Let me just go ahead and do that and we'll move the, move the effort along. So should be, make the, the motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of South Lion Incorporated into the South Lion zoning ordinance by section 102 to 182 by re-zoning the property, parcel number 21-19-126-002, more fully described in the attached exhibit A, parentheses, the property from the RM1 District, parentheses, multiple family residential, through the PD District, parentheses, planned development. Then you want me to read the next section too?
Well, there are changes throughout, so if you want, I could just highlight the changes from the June 8th version.
Sure, go ahead, whatever works.
Kelly, do you want to do this, since this is your thing, or do you want me to point out the changes?
I can do it pretty simply. The changes really are to the exhibit A property, which is the accompanying resolution where it says, whereas the approximately 11.65, it is a three-page, sorry, four, five-page document. In the very first paragraph, Thomasville was left over from the previous resolution. So Thomasville was, needs to be changed to Fieldstone. So that would say in ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of South Lion, rezoning parcel 2119126002, parentheses, Fieldstone. It should not say Thomasville. Then on page two, under the City of South Lion ordains, this is really just some clearing up of wording under A. It should say compliance with sections 102 to 1, 102-381. So really you're adding compliance with before sections. And the same for B, should say compliance with the preliminary stage.
There were a couple of non-substantive changes as well. In that same part one, right above A, we added the words "all of the following conditions" at the very end, just to be crystal clear that they have to meet all of these conditions. We removed that section right above, like under E, right above all of the conditions. We removed that paragraph as it was duplicative of E. And there were a couple other points, just, there were a couple other just grammatical, non-substantive changes, which we'll make those changes back to the original version that was presented to you last month before it comes back to you for second reading and before it's published.
Do you prefer the, the motion to read exhibit A as amended in the discussion?
That would be perfect.
Okay.
Excuse me, this is Joe Score with Polty Homes. I just had one quick comment. I didn't want to interrupt you, I'm sorry about that. In, in regard to the question that was asked about the, the price point of the homes, I think Mike was just a little bit high. We expect the homes to deliver somewhere in the 330 to 350 range. So I just didn't want any misunderstandings or misconceptions about that.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Attorney Hamamay, do you want me to reread it with that statement then?
No, I, I think the, the way you presented your motion as amended throughout our discussion today would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
I'll support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. So we have a motion from Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Walton. Is there any further discussion before we go to the city clerk for a roll call?
I got something.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Do the Ullmar Group representative, Mr. Moore, just want to ask you, sir, have you ever walked this property, spent a half an hour to an hour on the property?
Yes, sir. I, I used to live in Trotters Point for eight years. I've been down that road many, many times. And also I took the photographs in the fall that you saw in the presentation. There, I've, I've given four presentations on this now, and yes, sir, I've, I've been out on the property.
Okay, I just want to let you know that the McDowell and Associates material, I've read very thoroughly, and I've been in touch with McDowell years before, and they're very competent. And I agree with their, their assessments of the property and also their recommendations and their cautions that they left open on the matter. I can give you a historical footnote. Fifty years ago, that property was vacant, of course, and the access point was exactly the same place it is today where Lexington Drive would come through. And the area used to be quite, let us call it a lover's lane or a gathering point for underage people to drink some beer, one thing or another, when the police wouldn't bother them. And when, when a railroad train went through, it was quite a added enhancement because the automobiles would vibrate. And.
Richards, I'm going to, I'm going to need you to go ahead and wrap, wrap up the, the history of the property, please.
Okay, just letting you know, okay, this, this is a historical footnote. And if and when it happens, the homes are built and properties lots number 18, 19, 41, 40, 17, and 16 have a, have a problem with vibration from the railroad track. Will the City of South Lion be held harmless in this matter from potential litigation? Thank you.
So I don't know who your question was directed at, Councilmember Richards.
Mr. Ullmar, Mr. Moore from the Ullmar Group.
Yeah, I'm not that familiar with the City of South Lion PD agreements, so I would defer to city attorney if that is a standard provision of your agreements.
Attorney Hamamay, did you have anything to comment on that?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
I, I think what Councilmember Richards meant was if there's complaints about the houses vibrating from the trains going by, is South Lion in any way possibly at risk for legal actions?
I, I don't believe so, no. I, I can't think of off the top of my head any ordinance provision that would be implicated. I mean, this is, houses are allowed to be there, the train, it's zoned for housing. People buy knowing there's a train nearby. There are a lot of issues that come into play. So I kind of think you buy at your own risk at that point.
Thank you for, for just a little bit of clarification on that. Okay, so we had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. We have a motion by. Thank you, Councilmember Richards. We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Walton. City Clerk Deaton, would you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Walton?
Yes.
Richards?
No.
Pardon me? Richards?
No.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes, I'm going to go with it.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Felchek?
Yes, I will also support, and quickly, I wanted to just thank Ms. McIntyre, Mr. Knowles, and Mr. Scory for their efforts in helping us understand the differences and the breakdowns in the presentation, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So Attorney Hamamé, do we need to go ahead with the motion to recommend preliminary development, that second motion as well, then?
Yes.
I'd like to go ahead and make that motion to recommend preliminary plan development, preliminary site plan approval for Fieldstone Site Condominiums, parcel number 21-19-126-002, subject to, do you want me to read all 13 of these things, or just the 1 through 13 items contained on the page? What would you prefer?
You can refer to Kelly's letter.
Okay, so we're going to refer to items number 1 through 13, as contained in Kelly's letter in the packet, then.
I'll support.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. We have a motion from Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Walton. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, great. City Clerk Deaton, if you could please lead us in a roll call vote.
Dill?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Richards?
No.
Walton?
Yes.
Thank you. Listen, Pat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're moving on to new business this evening. Number one, Oakland County Cares Act Resolution.
In order for the city to receive Cares Act funds through the federal government in Oakland County, the city will need to adopt the resolution to approve the agreement for Cares Act distribution between Oakland County and the City of South Lyon. These funds are directly related to activities and expenses pertaining to COVID-19. We've attached a resolution, the Cares Act Fund Agreement, possible course of action to adopt or not adopt the resolution to approve the agreement for Cares Act distribution between Oakland County and the City of South Lyon.
Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution to approve the agreement for Cares Act distribution in Oakland County and the City of South Lyon.
I support.
A motion by Councilmember Kurtzwell, supported by Councilmember Dill, to adopt, to approve the agreement for Cares Act distribution between Oakland County and the City of South Lyon. Do we have any further discussion? Great. Uh, City Clerk Deaton, if you can, you could lead us in a roll call vote.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Felchek?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business number two this evening is budget amendments, and I know we have Patricia here in City Manager Zolnik, if you want to go ahead and take the lead on that.
Yeah, tonight, we have a few budget amendments that we're making before the end of the year, fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Budget amendments totaling $47,370 for general fund, $5,665 for Downtown Development Authority, and $167,582 for Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. The materials are attached, showing the budget amendments and explanations for the general fund, DDA fund, and also Vehicle Equipment Fund. Possible course of action to approve or reject a proposed amendment. Patricia's also here to answer any questions you may have regarding what these budget amendments pertain to.
Councilmember Fiddle, I saw you go up with your hand. You go ahead and go first.
Yes, I was just curious. The only thing that stood out to me was CIB's billing being over double what it had been projected to be. Could you explain that?
The beginning of the year, and, well, end of 2018, 19 budget, we eliminated the planner position within the department, the part-time position, and majority of the duties were taken over by CIB. We also included, or as was part of this, was the city zoning ordinance, so that in itself took additional funds for CIB. And also what's contained in this are funds that were deposited within the escrow, so when the city does in fact establish or something like a development occurs, an escrow is established, and the city gets reimbursed expense our engineers also. So the expenses are shown there, and then our revenues are received in another account. So you could have tens of thousands of dollars in expenses, but they are reimbursed, because they are part of the escrow, so that is also included with that.
Okay, so that's, that's what's comprised of that doubling? I mean, some of those escrow monies are paying that off?
It's all, it's all of those things.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Paul, just real quick on the adjustment to the DDA fund there. We talked about the trashcans that were purchased. There was discussion at the time that there were going to be lids purchased for those as well. Is that still on the docket to take place, do you know?
I believe the majority of lids were purchased. If they're not out there, I will, I will check to find out, but I know we has purchased some, so I will check on that for you, Steve.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the proposed budget amendments for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
Paul's second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kittle, supported by Councilmember Kennedy, to approve the proposed budget amendments year, June 30th, 2020. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, this is for Patricia. Is this, this whole measure what we call a housekeeping issue, would you say?
Uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Richards, you mean all of the budget amendments, or one in particular?
No, no, all of them together. I mean, this is the end of the, end of the fiscal year right now, and we've got to use our funds for the best we can, and, and this is absolutely necessary for some of it, that's for sure. And especially the vehicle replacement, which I think we voted on quite some time ago.
Yes.
So I would say you call it housekeeping, don't you?
Well, I don't know if we necessarily use the term "housekeeping," but we are required to make sure that we do not go over in our expenditures at the end of the fiscal year, that we have the necessary funds, funds in each fund, per se, so that we are able to cover all of the expenses that the city is spending throughout the end of the fiscal year. And so that's why it's necessary to make budget amendments. We did one in December mid-year, and then this is our estimates for year-end, to, again, ask, make sure that all of our necessary funds are available for the expenses that we have incurred, and that we'll be able to end the budget year. Having all of the funds necessary, and that we're not going to go over into any of our program expenses.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, it was, instead of being, it's really called procedural, in the fact that we need to do this before the end of the budget year, and this is what the, things that we always do at the end of the year, to make the final budget adjustments before June 30th.
We have a motion, a second.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, no, so I just wanted to make, that was an acceptable answer for Councilmember Richards. City Clerk Deaton, at this time, could you lead us in a roll call vote?
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Felchek?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. On to new business number three this evening, establishment of OPEV trust. City Manager Zolnik, go ahead.
In compliance with the State Mission Corrective Action Plan approved by council on October 14th, 2019, the city will establish a trust to pre-fund obligations for post-employment benefits other than pensions. An IRS Section 115 trust, the municipal employees retirement system of MERS, offers a cost-effective qualified trust with investment options. MERS will have fiduciary responsibility for plan compliance, investment oversight, and administration. The city will accept fiduciary responsibility for establishing an investment policy, asset allocation, contribution remittance, and documentation expenditures for reimbursements in compliance with the Michigan Public Employee Retirement System Investment Act. There will be a future corresponding adjustment to the City of South Lyon investment policy to reflect this additional investment, as I had mentioned earlier. We've attached the MERS Retirement Health Funding Vehicle Uniform Resolution, and the resolution establishes authorized signatories for the MERS RHF-V fact sheet in MERS 2020 Q1 Investment Summary. Possible course of action to approve or reject the two proposed resolutions to establish the OPEV trust, the MERS, and RHF-V. And Patricia and I are be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
I have a question.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, Paul, just curious, where is the money coming from to, to fund this?
Our city general fund.
Okay, all right.
So we've never pre-funded this in the past. We've always just paid the obligations as they've come up every year, and we've had discussions this year, and was discussed during the budget meetings about starting pre-funding of this particular plan.
Thank you.
The only thing, Mr. Mayor Zolnik, Patricia wanted to go over, discuss the portfolios or the investment options tonight also.
Uh, I did see Councilmember Kurtzwell had a hand up. Patricia, if you wouldn't mind hearing what Councilmember Kurtzwell has to say first, then we'll come back to you.
Absolutely.
Well, I don't mind waiting to hear the complete presentation.
Absolutely, okay, great. Patricia, go ahead.
Oh, sure, okay. Well, inside the MERS, the RHF-V resolution, which is for the retiree health funding vehicle, if you go to page three, item D, it discussed that the city would need to make an initial investment allocation when we sign the resolution. And I have had some discussions with MERS, particularly with John Way, who is the investment advisor that is assisting us with setting up the account. I also did have a discussion with Councilmember Kurtzwell earlier today as well. She had some questions regarding funding, and she had also spoken with MERS. That it seems to be in the city's best interest, if council agrees, that we utilize an option where we can put the majority of our initial investment into a short-term income investment, which is very conservative. And actually, if you, if I can refer to another document, in the back of our papers, we have the Q1 investment summary. And it shows for up through the first quarter of the MERS RHBF plan, FB, I'm sorry, RHF-V plan, that the rate of return for the short-term income was at 2.19%. So I know we're, this was before there was a lot more market volatility, but there still was a little bit going into that quarter, and that investment held pretty well. Again, it's very conservative, and it would also give us the opportunity to remove funds as needed for reimbursement to make our pension premiums, which, as we discussed in the budget meeting, as well as our prior pension meeting, that is some of our intention of setting up this pre-funded trust, is that we would have the option to take out funds, which would be actually called reimbursements through the trust, to pay those premiums. Whether we choose to do that quarterly, mid-year, or once a year, those funds would be earning interest until we needed to take it out and use it towards making our payments. That works out to be about $54,000 a year at this point, that we're making for our current group of retirees. And then we would also take the additional funds, which would be in that initial investment, what's called the normal cost from our Nihart valuation that we received last year. That amount, which is roughly about $6,000, we might want to consider putting into the MERS Total Market Portfolio, which is a little bit more of an aggressive fund, still, still conservative, obviously. All funds that we would participate in and that MERS has available have to meet the Michigan Persia rules and regulation, which is, which regulates investments that municipalities are able to participate in. So obviously, it meets those standards, but it is a little bit more of an aggressive portfolio, and it gives us an opportunity to earn maybe a little bit, depending on the market, obviously, a little bit more interest, but we wouldn't have as much money tied to it, and it wouldn't be the funds that we would be quote-unquote "counting on" to make the premium payments throughout the year, if that makes sense. The other, the other thing to keep in mind, if we choose to work with the Total Market Portfolio and the Short-Term Investment Fund, we are giving MERS the power of being the fiduciary and the administrator of the trust. So that takes away the need for the city to possibly have to hire an investment attorney, set up an investment committee with individuals that have an investment background and experience to be able to make those allocation choices, you know, based on the market's movement each month. MERS handles that. They have a team of experts that would do that for us. We would merely act in the capacity of, you know, we would obviously keep on top of the reports that come out each month, and quarterly, we would make the contributions. We'd be responsible for coming to council if we needed to take out those reimbursements, and also if we decided we wanted to make additional contributions, or change which funds we were participating in. Does anybody have any questions for me regarding what I just mentioned? I know it's a lot. But again, the percentages are broken down, the portfolio options are on page three of that resolution, under section D.
Kibble, I saw you go up with your hand, but I was going to give Councilmember Kurtzwell an opportunity-
Oh, yes, go ahead, sure.
-to add something. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Um, I thought that was a good discussion, and thank you so much, Patricia. I just sort of wanted to elaborate a little bit, because this was the big issue. Is, I think it's important to understand that, you know, these monies are going into a trust, and there are fiduciary responsibilities which have legal consequences if you do not follow your conduct and act appropriately as a fiduciary. The MERS Total Market Portfolio pushes that whole legal responsibility of acting as a fiduciary onto MERS, and takes it off of the shoulder of the city. When you look at the other, the other portfolios, the stock portfolio 100%, which we, we can't do, it's too much equity, MERS Capital Appreciation Portfolio, too much equity, we can't do that. The closest one that the city could manage on its own would be the MERS Established Market Portfolio, where it's 60% equities and 40% bonds. The reason that the fiduciary is important is because there are sections in ERISA which require and state that municipalities- which require and state that municipalities cannot invest more than 65%?
It's 70. I checked on that today, yep.
Okay, 70%, you cannot, you can't go over 70% in equities. I mean, that's a risk rate. You can't do it. And what happens in these portfolios is that you're gonna get returns. You're gonna get dividends. And it could be possible, let's say, in the MERS Established Market Portfolio, which is 60% equity, then at some point, your dividends are pushing you to 70, 72% in equities. So what the fiduciary's responsibility is, is to pull that portfolio back to the 70% investment in equity so that you are not in violation of ERISA. That is a huge responsibility for people that may not have investment savviness, because you really have to watch that portfolio to make sure that your equity position, it does not at some point violate ERISA. So the advantage to going to the Total Market Portfolio is that MERS balances the portfolio and ensures the compliance with ERISA. So that's a good thing, you know, quite frankly. The short-term income, and we talked about that today, is, to use an example, let's say that the city puts $60,000 into the Total Market Portfolio, and their premiums that they're gonna pay in December are $60,000. Well, if you look at the first quarter rate of return on that portfolio, you'll see that it's down 12.42%. First quarter was a bad quarter. So that would mean that if all your money was invested in the Total Market Portfolio, you would have to go back to the table and pull, find money from the general fund to make up what you lost, so that you can make your $60,000 premium. The recommendation that Patricia is advancing, there's the short-term income. You put all your premium money in the short-term income. That is extremely, extremely conservative, meaning that even in this environment, first quarter, that fund turned 2.19%, which, if the premiums were due, we would not have lost any money. I also was able to obtain how the short-term income performed in 2019, in 2012, 13, 14. It did not lose money. It was under 1%, but it was not negative. And, and so I think the suggestion that Patricia is proposing is safe. I mean, that's what I personally, I could support that. So that's the first issue. The second issue is on page three. And on page three, E, it has checked who can make changes in the investment. And what it appears to be checked is the employer will designate the RHFV investment contact in the manner required by MERS to make ongoing fund election changes through the online account. I don't know who is qualified to make those changes. And I don't know if Patricia, you want to have that responsibility. Where, I think the one that I feel a little bit more comfortable with is the fund election changes will be made by submitting a completed form and supported certified minutes identifying governing body approval. I would feel better if there was a second tier that was analyzing the change of the investment option that the city is using. So those are my two points. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kibble, I believe you were on deck.
Patricia, you had made mention of the market fiduciary, or Total Market fiduciary. I was just kind of curious, in the event that they were handling, like, we would kind of step away and give them the responsibility to manage this, what would be the watchdog agency to report back or audit to make sure that everything was up and up?
Well, they, MERS is audited by, coincidentally, Plant Moran. We still, their division and these trusts that they have, with the RHFV, I can't say that correctly, I'm sorry. RHFV, is audited for, you know, the Government Accounting Standards Board, standards in place. And then they're also audited for the Michigan Persia, which I'm not sure if I have that entire acronym, but that has to do with the Pension and Employment Retiree. It's the Investment Securities Act, basically, for the state of Michigan that municipalities have to follow. And so that would be, I guess, quote-unquote, the watchdogs. But we would also, as an organization, be looking and making sure that they're doing things in the best interest. And if the council or if administrative staff felt at any time that, you know, we needed to make a change, we would be able to do that through another resolution, through council approval, and we could either move funds into something else within this portfolio with MERS, or we could pull out altogether and then go with another trust option. The key is that we have to have the funds for OPEB put into a Section 115 trust. That is, you know, the qualifier. So we can't just go out to any bank and open up an account and say this is gonna be an OPEB account where we're gonna designate the funds. We have to do it through the Section 115 trust, which is through the IR, the Internal Revenue Code. They're Section 115.
Well, MERS has been kind of complicated to take care of our pension issues, but, I mean, they do have the infrastructure to be able to handle this stuff, so they seem like a likely candidate. I just was mostly curious who might be the independent auditor to make sure that everything was square. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead. Oh, you're on mute, Councilmember Kennedy. You're on mute.
Is there, do we know if there's a fee structure for them serving as the fiduciary in this arrangement? What it actually costs for them to monitor and manage those funds for us?
Yes, I know with the fee structure, the initial fee to set it up, there is, there is no charge. Once the funds are in the investment, if we make a withdraw earlier than 90 days, there is a 2% fee. If we keep the funds in for longer term, the fee structure for annual expense is about, let's see, for withdrawals, about 18%, it looks like. Oh, I'm sorry, no, 1.8%.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's a big difference. I apologize. I read that wrong. But if council would like more information on the fee structure, I can get that information from MERS and get that sent out.
So in essence, I mean, we'd have to make more than that 1.8% to actually make any money on this, right?
Correct.
Good.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
I would like to see if there's support to change E on the form and move it away that the employer would designate, and check the first box where the changes can be made by changing, by filling out the form and providing minutes from council approving the change. I feel a little bit more confident. I'd like to know when those changes are being made.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Maggie, would you accept the idea of giving, being given notice so you could influence the employer's decision, rather than us actually taking it out of the minutes?
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna influence anybody. I wanna, I wanna, you know, I don't wanna miss, I don't wanna misinterpret your question. What I wanna be able to do is to look at the change, understand why the change is being made, and then assess whether or not that change is appropriate for the economic environment that we are in at that time. I mean, I just want to have an opportunity to review it, have a say in it. I don't want to sit anybody down and say, you know, I have a penchant for this, and I'd like to see the money go there. I don't want to influence anything. What I want to be able to do is to have an opportunity to scrutinize how that decision is made going forward. Now, now...
The only reason I ask is because the way that thing is structured, with the employer being the designator to make the changes, if they were able to get a reflection of what our positions are, or our impressions are, and that weighed into how they were going to act, we would be in that same loop.
Or, or keep it the way it is, and maybe we just put it on the record that any change, post-change comes before council, and leave the form the way it is. See, these are not, these are not cash accounts. I asked him that. I said, can we just deposit money and use it as a cash account? No. These are not cash accounts. You are, these are investment vehicles. So, you know, you probably want to spend a little bit of time before somebody switches these around to take a look at how the market, how they have done, how their performance has been. So if you want to switch something out of the Total Market Portfolio and move it into the Capital Preservation Portfolio, which is 20% equities and 80% bonds, so that's very conservative, I would like to take a look at the performances and look at what their holdings are that they have in the various funds, and, you know, sort of give it a second look. I mean, that's all I'm asking for, is a second look. But anyway, Glenn, that you think would be appropriate, I can, I can work with that.
Well, I don't know that any of us, or all of us, at least, will end up having something to weigh in on that, but I do think that it's appropriate that we had, we get wind of the notion that there's an interest in changing the makeup of what our investment is.
That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah.
How we get there, I don't really care.
Like I said, I think if we had the opportunity to weigh in, keeping it with the employer being the official designator of what actions are being taken, I think that simplifies things.
Okay.
Patricia, would you?
Well, we're provided notice of any future change.
Correct.
Okay, okay, I can live with that.
Do you see a problem with that, Paul?
No, not at all. I think you can accomplish basically the same thing, and we would be following up, you know, with council, and this is what we're proposing, and obviously have discussion at a council meeting before anything would be done.
I think that sounds perfect, yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, I saw your arm go up for a moment. Did you still have something?
Yeah, so Patricia, you know, I'm looking at this year-to-date return on the bond portfolio, for instance. That's probably the most conservative investment on that back page there.
Yes.
1.7%. You know, if that's what it netted out for the year, the only people making money are the guys serving as the fiduciary, right? I mean, seriously, we could put it in a CD in a bank, and whatever we made, we'd be ahead compared to...
Well, the difficulty is, is we cannot just do that with this. We have to establish a trust, and that's why we're using the mechanism through MERS in order to handle that. So whether it's making money or losing money, we need to set up a trust to do it. Patricia, in this, Patricia, do we still need to include what the percentages are for the original investment about? We're gonna do that.
We would need to check those percentages in those funds that we would want to move forward with.
Do you want to mention what those recommendations were for everyone?
Sure. What I had mentioned would be, and again, we're looking at an initial investment of $60,000, would be 10% in the MERS Total Market Portfolio and 90% in the short-term income. So that would be on that page three of the resolution. Section D is where those, it says portfolios built for you, funds to build your own portfolio, the two columns.
And you want to discuss the reasoning why you're saying those dollar amount are those percentages in each one of those accounts, so everybody fully understands?
Oh, sure, I can repeat that, yes. So the thought process is that the majority of the funds in the short-term income, because it would be, those would be the funds that we would use towards the premium, which is essentially $54,000 a year right now. We would have a little bit higher return of investment, looking at where those funds are right now. And we would be able to not be losing money when we need to go and pull the reimbursements out to pay those premiums. Then we would also utilize the Total Market Portfolio, which has the potential to have a higher rate of return. Right now, it just doesn't because of the market. But as the market turns, we would have, hopefully, moving forward, a higher rate of return. But we'd have a lower investment, lower risk, and we would put our normal cost, which is the amount that Nihart, when they do our evaluation, reviewing all of our documents, tells us that we have to put in each year as a minimum to fund our OPEB. So that's why I'm, I am proposing doing a 90-10 split, which will effectively, the 90% would cover the cost of the annual premiums, and the 10% would cover the cost of the, what's called the normal cost.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
And Patricia, what were those, the 90 and 10 went into which funds again?
Oh, I'm sorry, 90% in the short-term income and 10% in the MERS Total Market Portfolio.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, concerns on the investment percentages?
No.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Okay, so you said that the Total Market Portfolio is, that's the one that's the 1.8% annual fee?
Correct. And I, and I will talk to MERS tomorrow, and I will get a fee structure that's spelled out, that's a little more comprehensive, and I'll get that out to council.
That'd be great. Thank you.
That's my cat, I'm sorry. It's sitting on my lap.
Well, we got to the fun part of the meeting.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to establish a city post-employment benefits, other than pensions, OPEB trust, by adopting and approving the Municipal Employees Retirement System of Michigan MERS Retiree Health Funding Vehicle Uniform Resolution.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Kurtzwell, supported by Councilmember Kibble. Is there any further discussion on this first motion? Okay, great. City Clerk Deaton, if you would please lead us another roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes. Motion passes. Councilmember Kurtsell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to adopt and approve the resolution establishing authorized signatories for municipal employees retirement system of Michigan MERS, contracts and service credit purchase approvals as attached on agenda note number three.
I'll support. Go ahead.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kurtsell, supported by Councilmember Walton. Do we have any further discussion on this second motion? Again, City Clerk Deaton, if you would please lead us in another roll call vote. Thank you.
Hey, Dill?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business number four this evening, and I'm sorry, uh, City Clerk Deaton, I'm going to fall back on you again here. If you would just like to go ahead and introduce what it is we, um, added to the agenda this evening.
Sure. Um, what happened, probably about a month ago, Joe Rizal from Oakland County sent out an email asking if this House bill, 5141 passed, if we would be interested in participating um, in an agreement where the Oakland County Clerk's Office would actually process our absentee ballot at the county for us, as of 4 o'clock the day before the election. Anything that comes in the night of election or an election day would be processed in our precinct. Um, let me see. Um, the bill was passed, they're waiting for the governor to sign it. Um, it will be a great, great help to the city and our inspectors. The agreement does not have an expiration date. It can be canceled by either party within 84 days of notice. The deadline for the agreement is July 13th at 5:00 PM, which is why it was thrown at you today, because today's the last time we're meeting before that date. Um, there's no fee for the agreement, and, um, just based upon the numbers that we're getting for the August election, our absentee ballot count is going to be very, very large. Um, just for an example, for the November 2016 presidential, we had 1,533 absentee ballots. For the August 4th election, I am already at 1,646 requests for absentee ballots. And I think until we are able to have an absentee counting board where we can buy the high-speed tabulator ourselves and run those ballots, if we don't, um, participate with the county, I could see our election inspectors, um, running absentee ballots until very early in the morning. So I'm hoping we can pass this. Um, I don't know if Lisa has anything to, to say about it, it was pretty much last minute. I know we had a Zoom meeting this past Friday with Joe Rizal from the county and Lisa Brown, the clerk. Um, and many clerks were on the phone call, and there's a lot of interest in it. So it's pretty much first come, first served. They're going to try to accommodate as many people as they can. Um, the reason we have the July 13th deadline is because the county has to see how many people want to participate, uh, how many communities, and how many ballots they're going to be looking at running, um, because they're going to have to hire, well, not hire, but they're going to have to have more people assist. Um, and they have to have a location large enough to do that. Um, another thing, which I don't think I mentioned, um, we would have one or two of our election inspectors with those ballots on election day, and, you know, watching the process. Um, I imagine they'll probably be helping, asking them to help push them through the tabulators as well. But we would have two people there, so it's not like we would just be handing out our ballots and saying, okay, there you go. Um, and we have our QBF reports through the statewide, uh, QBF system, which keeps track of every ballot issued, every ballot returned, um, and I think this would be a great help for everybody.
Um, City Clerk Deaton, I want to thank you, uh, for breaking that down for us. I, I saw a couple of hands go up. Uh, Councilmember Kibble, I saw go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the agreement for election services between Oakland County and the City of Southland.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Is there any further discussion for anything on this matter? Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Just a quick question. I know that we budgeted for, I think, a tabulator or something. Um, would we still need that? If we were to do this?
I do plan on purchasing those because we don't know how long this agreement will last. This could be like a one-time thing that they're offering. Um, I have money in the budget for, to purchase those for the November election. And I just found out the other day, and I applied for a grant to the state that where they would offer cash back for us, to us for purchasing those.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, did anyone else have anything for City Clerk Deaton on this matter? Okay, uh, we have motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Kennedy, to approve the agreement for election services between Oakland County and the City of Southland. City Clerk Deaton, if you would please lead us in another roll call vote.
Walton?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kurtswell? Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. With that, we'll move on to the budget this evening. No one with anything on the budget this evening? Okay, great. Uh, we'll move on to the manager's report. And City Manager Zelnick, go ahead. The, the field is yours.
As mentioned by the chief earlier, we had a gas, uh, gas leak that occurred today as part of the construction project at DPW for the installation of the storm sewer. Uh, Consumers Energy was out there very quickly. A fire department did respond to the scene due to the fact that there was a leak. Um, it had to do with the insulation applied that was repaired. We're working with our engineers to ensure that we do not have that sort of thing occur again out there. Uh, we did, in fact, uh, I update you regarding COVID-19, we did open City Hall last week. We have had, so people coming in on a regular basis, people calling, we're assisting people. Um, probably 95% of the people are coming in, are wearing, uh, masks, and everybody is practicing social distancing. It's working very well. We're able to, to serve the public in a timely manner. I did bring up also, within a report, also regarding our water and sewer rate analysis, that we're going to be bringing this back to City Council. I'm working with Plant and Moran regarding them coming back. We are to make a change to it. We would need to make a change to our rates, uh, by September in order for it to take, take place on the, for the, uh, October, after October 1st billing. We're still working with Oakland County and their reopen toolkits. We have approximately 40 of them left. We had close to 100, so a lot of businesses have come in. They're still coming in and picking them up. So people, more and more businesses are opening up, and they're appreciative of the, um, investment that Oakland County has, has made with the local business. On top of that, I want to thank, uh, Phil Wyper and Oakland County Commissioners for what we adopted tonight with the CARES Act funding, that we did, are in fact going to get reimbursed for a lot of the, uh, precautions and things that we've purchased in relationship to COVID-19 throughout the city, and those expenditures are going to run all the way through, uh, November 30th. I did mention, uh, also to everyone regarding the garage sale permits. We did not have a free garage sale, uh, weekend this year. People have been calling and, you know, wanting to get garage sale permits. We still want them to, you know, come in and file and get a permit. Um, we want to know when they're having them still, because we want to make sure, based upon the spirit of the ordinance, that people are not having garage sales on multiple weekends in a row or for multiple months. But we do want to fact, as far as, um, not require the individuals have to come in and pay $5 here at City Hall just for something like that. Um, the last thing is that, uh, that Oakland County, or the state of Michigan, did in fact adopt another executive order, which did allow us to continue with our electronic meetings until the end of July. So right now, that will go to July 31st, was expected to expire at the end of this month. And I believe that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Walton, you have something for, uh, City Manager Zelnick, go ahead.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Paul, just a quick question. In the past, we have partnered, um, the free garage sale weekend with, um, the large pickup from GFL. Are we going to be offering that large pickup service?
Uh, we can inquire on that. We didn't necessarily decide that we were going to have a garage sale weekend. We were not trying to, uh, create any, um, you know, unnecessary kind of, um, un, unused of social distances, I guess, but I will check on them to see if, in fact, if people are starting to, you know, have them, that we can in fact get those, uh, containers from, uh, GFL.
That would be nice, because I know a lot of people look forward to that spring cleaning and getting things out of their house. And with the COVID, a lot of people had extra time to do some cleaning, so I'd like to see that. Thank you.
City Clerk Deaton, you had something?
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to mention that they, our residents are now allowed to put out large items for pickup at any time. We, we did used to have this large pickup day, and that, we did coincide that with the citywide yard sales. But I think it was the last contract, or maybe the year before, or the previous contract, it was agreed that they will pick up anything at any time.
Great, thank you.
Patricia, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, yes, it was in the last contract that we signed that we changed that.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy, thank you for your patience. Go ahead.
So, Paul, uh, what does it take to put this into effect? Are we, uh, going to tell the residents that there, there are no fees for them to have garage sales? Can you go ahead and make that happen, or do we have to have some other order of business to put that into effect?
Uh, we can make that happen, you know, not, and not collect any of the fees for people having garage sales, but we do in fact still want them to get the permit.
Yep, absolutely. So are we going to put that on the, the city website, the, uh, sign? What, as far as trying to get the message out, put it on the, uh, downtown Southland Facebook site and all that kind of thing?
All of the above.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Councilmember Kurtsell, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I have questions. One for the city manager and one for the city clerk. Would you like me to ask the questions to the city clerk now, or, or hold that for my council comment?
No, certainly, just go ahead. That's fine.
Okay, thank you so much, um, Mr. Mayor. The first one to the city manager, uh, deals with People's Express. I just wanted to know if you've had an opportunity to talk with them to find out what their protocols are in terms of having that public transportation sanitized, what they are doing to protect our, our residents. Um, um, do you have any information on that? I have received some questions on that.
No, I, no, I did not. I'd be interested in learning what kind of questions you may have gotten, because I know it's suspended some operations for a while. I'm not sure if everything is back in full operation or not with, uh, them practicing social distancing and requiring people to wear masks, or their cleaning operations that they're having within their units as well.
Those, those are the questions. Those are the questions. There, I've seen there, the People's Express through town, so, um, I think people have seen it, um, maybe a little bit hesitant to use it, because I don't think, uh, people are aware of what their protocols are, uh, right now. So, um, any assistance you can provide on that would be great.
Do that, okay.
And, uh, this goes to the city clerk. Lisa, I, I have some seniors, and maybe you could clear this up for everybody. Uh, apparently people are receiving, there's two groups of people. Let's first start with the average person out there. Is receiving communications from the state regarding absentee voter ballot applications.
Correct.
And, and they're confused, because number one, they did not call the city and ask for the voter ballot application, and, um, they don't know what they should do with it. And I don't want to answer those kinds of questions, so I thought maybe you could, I told them I would be asking you tonight, and maybe you could provide, um, some assistance on explaining that. And then the second one is, I just received this in the mail. Um, it's a voter application, absentee ballot application. This came from the Southland Area School District. So they, uh, did they contact you and get a list from you?
No.
So they did coordinate this with you, so they don't really know. We don't know if the list they're using is accurate. But one of the things that they say on the back of their instruction is, um, deliver the application in any of these ways. Mail it, email it, or deliver it in person. I didn't know we were allowed to email these to you.
That's new. Yep, um, what, what's happening is, we have a permanent list of absentee voters that we automatically issue the applications to. The state then decided, because of the virus, that they wanted to make that, oh, they wanted to make that possible for everybody. So they took it upon themselves to email their absentee ballot application to everybody that was not on the local clerk's permanent list. So there's two applications. Now, the schools are now sending out applications due to they're having their bond on the August election, so they want people to vote. Um, they did not get their list from me. I'm guessing they got it from their state, or I don't know if the Southland Community Schools, maybe they have like an address mailing in their, of their own system, because it would have went to all residents in their community in the school district. I, that could be. I'm not sure about that. But I know it's confusing. We explain this every single day to people, and it doesn't even, it doesn't matter the age. We get younger people, older people. It's confusing. Um, I just want people to know, you, you mail in one application, and that's all you need. You get anything after that, you can throw them away. Um, and I want people to keep in mind that the closer you get to the November election, each of the parties also send out absentee ballot application, ballot, uh, applications. They're usually little postcards. Those don't come from my office either. Those come from the different parties, political parties. So the main thing people need to realize is, you need, if you get one application, you turn that in, you're good. Anything comes after that, you can throw them out. Um, another thing that happened was, apparently the state's file for qualified voters, um, is not quite up to date. Um, because I had someone call me and say that they received an absentee ballot application from the state, um, from someone who had lived in that house probably two, three years ago. So I asked them to give me the name of that person. I then went into the qualified voter file, and I put, I canceled them and moved out, and the date they moved out, and how I got that information. So sometimes things get through that should not get through, but, you know, things like that. Um, but I want everybody to know that just because you get more than one application, if you, you send me in three applications, you're not going to get three ballots. People are concerned that somebody else is going to grab that application and get a ballot and vote for them. My qualified voter file, which is where we issue the ballots and the applications, will only allow me to issue one ballot per person. The only way I can issue another ballot to someone is if they give me their ballot back, and I spoil it, and they issue, and then we could issue another one. So I know there's a lot of concern about that, but there's so many checks and balances in our office. There's so many through the state. Um, when somebody turns in an application, they still don't automatically get the ballot. We pull up their information in our qualified voter file, and we compare the signature on that application to the signature in the qualified voter file, which matches their driver's license signature. So if somebody off the street finds an absentee ballot application, and they sign it and turn it in to us, and we pull it up in our computer system, and it does not look like the signature in our system that is from their driver's license, we don't issue a ballot. So there's a lot of checks and balances, but I know there's a lot of confusion about it as well.
Well, this says email it.
And they're allowing that now.
So people can, so you don't look at an original signature anymore. You just look at a digital.
Well, what I have to do, I, I get emails, because the state sent those out, if you look at the bottom, it says, email to L. Deaton at southlandmi.org.
Um, no, this is from the school.
Oh, I don't know about the schools, but the states have my email, it might, just one of the states sent out, says email to, and it has my email on it. I have been getting emails daily since they sent those out. I think I probably printed maybe 80 of them. Now, if they attach, make, if they send it to me as an attachment, I can print it, and it's very clear. Sometimes people have been taking a picture of it and emailing it to me. I can't even print that, because it becomes the size of their email. So then I have to email them back and say, please send us an attachment, or drop in our Dropbox, because obviously they have it in their hand. So they could drop in our Dropbox or mail it. But yes, the state says we are now allowed to, to, uh, process email applications.
Hey, thank you so much for that clarification. I know people are really confused about this.
Yeah, and I, like I said, it's just going to get worse as we get closer to November, because then, uh, the, the political parties are going to be sending out more.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Councilmember Kibble, you had something?
Well, I just wanted to kind of follow this whole thing. It, it's really troubling to me. The, the postage cost is being squandered by all these duplicitous, um, ballots being put out there.
I, I agree.
That's crazy.
Now, our, we send out our, sorry, uh, we send out our permanent list, and then as people call in and they request them, we send them out, you know, by request. I don't know where the schools are getting their information from. I don't know where, um, well, I know where the state got their information from, and I don't know if they have like a dis- know if they have like a discount on their postage. But yes, there's a lot of money being spent through the post office right now.
I mean, at least the email stuff is inexpensive except for your time having to go through it. So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kibble and Councilmember Kurtzwell for getting that information out there from City Clerk Deaton. I'm sure there is quite a bit of confusion on all that, so thank you. That was good. Does anyone else have anything for Paul this evening for the manager?
Yes, I do.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Paul, I have two questions that I couldn't get complete answer at City Hall. I think I ought to mention it this evening at meeting. Number one, it's my understanding that at 8:25 West Lake Street, the Langdon Development, the contractor has gone under the road and got his excavations in there, but he has not paid the permit to tie into the sanitary sewer, water department, okay? But he's working on his other things that he has to complete. Okay. I don't think I ever recalled seeing anything from HRC regarding an engineering diagram of how this has been accomplished, okay? And I would hope we could get something sent to us in the meantime regarding this under the road development and the tie-in that they're going to try to make, okay? And when the, when his payment fee would be applicable. Also, second question. The 318 property where we have demolished the old Slara Building, previously a library, okay? It's easy to see when the hall was opened where there was a previous house and there was a basement and it was filled in with different dirt. And if a new house is to be built on that property after we sell it, okay? Supposedly, it would have to conform to the other houses that are in the vicinity, all of which would have a sizable front porch and a garage in the back. Is there enough room for a house to be built on that property that would conform to zoning requirements and put a garage in the back? And what, okay, I'd like to see some update on the possibility of the sale of the property to private interests or whoever it might be. Thank you, thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Paul, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, what I can say is that we are working on creating a development agreement. The attorney and I have been exchanging emails back and forth, and the plan, as was discussed with counsel prior, was to get an RFP for a company to develop their property, put on a house that is conducive to the neighborhood and does in fact match adjoining architecture. So that would, that before with that agreement goes out and RFP would go out, we would have counsel review it and discuss those particular items. As far as the fee for the water and sewer tap, I can check to see if that fee in fact has been tapped, but how that is tapped are on the plans, whether they directional board and how they tap into the sanitary sewer line or the water line. It is identified on the plan submittal that was turned in, and Carl, I'd be happy to go over that with you at any time you'd like.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, City Managers on it. Anyone else with anything for the city managers' report this evening? Okay, we will move on to public comment at this time. If there's anyone that would like to speak, please state your name and address and raise your hand virtually so City Clerk Deaton can see you.
Okay, we do have one person raising their hand, which is Amber King, and I'm going to allow her to talk right now.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. King.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council. I just wanted to thank everybody for voting in favor of the agreement with Oakland County and South Lion with regards to the election services. As someone who has worked as an election worker before and planning to do this fall as well, it is a long day, even without all the write-in, the mail-in ballots that we anticipate. So thank you so much for doing that because that would add, as was mentioned, add a lot of time to the night. So thank you for that. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. King. City Clerk Deaton, do you see anyone else that is waiting to speak?
No, there is not.
Okay. At this time, we will wrap up our public comment and move on to council comments. Councilmember Dill, did you want to go ahead and lead us off?
Oh, no. I don't have anything to say.
Excellent.
Thank you. I'm just not, I'm not feeling well. Sorry.
Okay. I'll tell you what, Councilmember Walton, then, if you would like to go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lisa, I hope you feel better. I don't have anything either to say tonight, so let's all have a great week and a couple weeks, and we'll see you then.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Richards?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have four items I think I ought to mention here. I'd like to give an accolade or hats off to the Witch's Hat Brewing on Lafayette Street. And some of these things have been mentioned previously that they have done, but I don't think anybody's ever mentioned the terrific job that they did on repaving their parking lot and adding some extras to the exterior of the building. And it's very impressive and it's beautiful, okay? And, you know, Mr. Cotton Jim surely went all out in its asset improvement to the property and the city overall. Next item I'd like to mention was the Creek cleanup this weekend was a big success in a lot of ways, especially on the short notice that we had. And I have to say, I was wrong in the last meeting when I said that it was going to be later on in the latter part of August or or already or later part of July and possibly in August. I wasn't aware that we were going to do it quite so soon. It was helped out, of course, by the union from the tube mill, and a lot of workers were there with their children. There was dads with a couple of kids usually. I didn't see any women participating this year, but it was a pretty good turnout on such short notice, and quite a lot was filled up, but we had a whole, a big roll-off box this year, and it was filled up quite nicely, and it remains on the tube mill parking lot for some more fill-up before it's ready to go. Anyway, Larry pulled it off very nicely and he organized everything, and he had teams set up, and it went very well. Next item is the the gazebo deck at the Historic Village is coming along very nicely. I would say it's three quarters completed. It's being done with womanized wood, and it won't be painted over for the first year. And we're also going to do the side ramp that's for the handicapped, okay, coming up to that. We're going to add that in. And it's not open to the public very much, but just to say, it's coming along very nicely. Also, the Historic Commission has agreed to hire a professional service to take care of the problem in the belfry of the chapel, which we have continued problem with the birds nesting and getting through the barriers that we put up in there and less nesting in the lubers. And we're going to have a professional service come and do it this time. And lastly, I'd like to mention that Doug Varney and I visited about 11 sites in the city where I wanted to make sure I informed him of the true facts of what we had before us that were difficulties and some of what you mentioned and voted on in council. And there's going to be more sites to look at in the future. And I hope our project goes off quite well this week at starting the repaving of the bike trail on at the 11 mile location. And that's all for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. And I know two weeks ago, I kind of let you go on a little bit longer. Let's, I I got a timer here. You were just a little over the the normal time limit, so let's work on that for for next meeting, okay? Let's let's try and stay in that time limit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody who contributed to the the patronicity campaign for the city's DDA. As was mentioned, they raised almost $9,000 to help the businesses in the DDA district, and just want to thank everybody for their generosity. I mean, we got $4,000 in matching funds and the the residents and neighbors and other folks put in almost $5,000 on the on their part. The other thing is, I just want to encourage everyone to continue to shop local and to dine local, and be sure to help our businesses get back on their feet as they begin reopening after being closed for the past few months. You know, basically, they're going to need some help, and we need to see what we can do to help them succeed. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Mayor, I have a little bit of a show and tell tonight. I'll make it quick. Unfortunately, it looks like we're going to be living with COVID-19 for a while. It's not going away. We just have to learn how to be careful and cautious. One of the things I recently purchased is a UV sanitizer. I plan to use this as I travel this summer. I can pass it along any surface. I can pass it along in any room that I'm going to be staying in across places where you drink, like in a bathroom, the shower, the sheets. I can use this for packages that arrive at the house. I can scan over that. So it's a UV. It has a battery with it. You can't use it for the body, but you can use it for surfaces. If I'm going to take a cab, I may want to take this with me past the wand in the backseat where I'm going to be sitting before I enter. So there's many uses for this. It's a sanitation wand. Additionally, what I have also purchased is a Key Smart, and this Key Smart is made out of copper. And what it is, it's it's a key, and it allows me to, has a point on it, so I can use it at an ATM without putting my fingers on it. I can use this at a cashier and log things in on it. It has a hook on it. I can open doors by pulling it, pulling the door. I can push a bathroom door open with the tip of it. And the reason it's made out of copper, when I was doing my research on this, is that copper is an antimicrobial material. And so if there is coronavirus on the surface in which I am, which this is being placed, the copper will take care of acting as a disinfectant. So it, the virus does not travel on things that are copper because of the nature of copper. That's why I think they have copper piping with water lines. So two products that that I've purchased, I plan to use, and I think if that helps people out, I think we need to get on with our lives, but we need to be careful and cautious. And last, Lisa, I hope you're feeling better. We want you well for 4th of July. Thoughts and prayers go to you, so you just, you know, get well this week, okay? All right. Good night, everybody. Have a good week and have a safe fourth.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Just depending on the version of the UV thing you got there, sometimes those can be used on cell phones and devices like that as well.
Yeah, and computers, anything, any surface.
Right. So great. That's a great tip for our residents. With that, we got Councilmember Kibble. Go ahead.
Just wanted to say the farmer's market is really up and running and a lot of activity going down. People are using good judgment, they're staying socially distant, and a lot of masks being worn, a lot of masks being sold down there. So that's nice. And and the view actually of Draft Street with the new paint job is a nicer backdrop too for the marketplace. So wanted to thank Bill Irwin for the replacement flags that he's put downtown. It's beautiful. That's that's quite a nice gesture for him to have done that for us. And the hanging baskets in downtown look terrific. So just wanted to point that out if if anybody wasn't aware. Keep your eyes peeled when you're going down Lafayette. It's a nice view. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Kibble. I will also keep this brief. I want to again welcome Nate Mack to the team. Looking forward to getting to know Nate and and working with him and and get ready to, you know, be a big part in getting this downtown back on its feet. I wanted to say Happy Father's Day to all of our fathers out there. I hope you all had a great weekend. It was a little toasty for my liking, but hey, it's better than green. I wanted to thank Councilmember Kurtzwell. I I cruised by Paul Baker Park. I know that you were the green thumb behind all that, and and I do appreciate that, as do our residents on over there on that side of town. The park looks fantastic, so thank you to you and and any assistance you've had in that, you know, whether it be from residents or the DPW. So that's great. It's a great entrance to the community. And just really, I know I'm a broken record on this. I can't thank the staff from top to bottom, our first responders to here at the administration building, at the wastewater. They continue to shoulder the load here in a in a very difficult time, and I'm very appreciative of that. And I'm appreciative of all of you this evening and in your efforts in this meeting and helping us move the city forward. So I hope you all have a great week. I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to adjourn.
Great. Everyone have a great night off. We'll see you soon.